Ms. Huth?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Whelan?
Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Siderwate?
Here. Just for the record, Mr. Whelan called earlier today and he's not feeling well, so he will not be at the meeting tonight. This is a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, so we're working off the agenda in the back of the room. The copy's in the back of the room. We want to add one item, which would be petitions and communications. If we could do that at this point, if there's no objection from council members. Okay, any, if, thank you everyone for your hard work on that particular item. And finally, for this special meeting, we have one last item, and that's an appointment through the library board. This was carried over from our previous meeting. It's Kevin Maxson. Received his bachelor's from the U of I in English Literature in 1991. Is currently a software consultant for Prairie City Consulting and has been working in that field for over 10 years. His term would expire if approved on June 30th, 2005. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion? For discussion, all those in favor placing a five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. No further business before this special meeting. We stand adjourned. And Mr. Otto, you want a five-minute break before we start in on the, or?
That's the sense of the council.
On then, with item number two on our agenda for the special meeting, it's an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Alan Strong. Ms. Tyler is going to roll this. There were some changes, and I believe the final copy of the development agreement was put on desks. Am I right? Does everyone have a copy of what we're working off of? Okay, Libby?
And I can run through generally, these are minor changes that we caught in the revision review of the redevelopment agreement. Also have a correction on the memorandum, talked about the revision to the site plan, which was undertaken to protect an access easement. I'll talk about driveways tonight, so that's not covered yet, but, but this was looking at the revised site plan, reducing the square footage of the banquet center from 10,000 square feet, it's down to 6,600 square feet. 8,000 was incorrect, so I wanted to make that correction. The coffee shop bakery scales out at 7,000 square feet. So that's just the exhibit F attached to your redevelopment agreement. Generally, the changes that are highlighted in the agreement today, to clarify that the date today's date, there was some chronological items that we wanted to correct. There's also reference to exhibit E that said it showed structures to be demolished when it didn't, so we had to correct the references to exhibit E. We changed that condition precedent to obtain a title to mark following February 3rd, January 3rd, and didn't make a lot of sense to have that condition precedent be before the date of this agreement. Exhibit numbering was off, and we added what substantially completes for phase two, just a little better definition on that being like an 80 percent completion. We clarified the requirements to obtain a liquor license. And then finally, we added in the reserve section 4.3, new language about what would occur with that temporary gravel parking area in the event that the developer elected not to proceed with phase two. Wanted to make sure that that did get paved pursuant to our zoning ordinance or kept in a dust-free condition if it was not to be a parking area. So that's on page 11. That's the most significant change here. That summarizes the corrections, and at this point, I know you also handed out an email from Allison Kingston, who resides a, I think it's 402 Lake, which is just directly to the banquet center. So you should all have a communication from Ms. Kingston. And pass out this platter survey that we've been using that highlights the area that we have worked with the developer to ensure is retained as an easement. And we do have, working with our, so there Ben Fisher, we found that, you know, that is a recorded easement. So that is protected by the site plan under either phase one or phase two. Now, Ms. Kingston, in just a visit to the site, will show that she actually parks south and west of that existing easement. So that's south, it's not on her property where she parks, it's south of her property. And whether she is permitted to continue to park there is really a matter between the two property owners, and not, in our opinion, a matter for the city to decide this evening. It's something that worked out together, both parties understand that. It's going to require some additional investigation and just some negotiation and cooperation between the two as to whether and if there is continued to, to do that, parking in that fashion. But we think the important thing is that easement be protected, and maybe that in the future, the two parties work out an agreement where that easement can be relocated to the north, which would allow the banquet center to expand northward because the developer, Mr. Strong, does own the property directly to the north of this Helmut site. So in that event, he would come back with a revised site plan and possibly go upwards to that 10,000 square foot number. But in the meanwhile, this allows protection of that easement to get access to the landlocked property at Lake Street for 202 Lake and for the project to proceed. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Just in the conversations that occurred, I'm wondering why the option of making the access on the northern kind of the final outcome of this, of this access issue. I'm just curious, because the proposal was, was shrunk by not terribly significant degree, but there was, you know, it was a, I bet, I guess a third of the square footage was taken off of the proposal, and...
The question was, why wasn't the easement moved from the south to the north side?
Why is it that Alice Ann Kingston has not provided access on the northernmost part of the newly acquired property? Was that ever a conversation, or?
I think it was a conversation, the two parties couldn't come to an agreement on what the nature of the new easement would be.
So if an easement, so if, so if access was provided that was identical to the existing access except moved to the, to the north, both parties would have to agree to that?
Right.
Okay.
I know that discussion took place, but the agreement did not occur. We had a two-month period, and this is as it remains now, and the developer is anxious to complete the phase one and move on to phase two.
Any other questions?
Ms. Tyler?
I'm not understanding what's, hold on, let me ask this question. What changes for the owner of 402 Lake as far as driveway access?
Well, the ex, the easement remains.
Okay, so the driveway that, that this property's been using for however many years, which is, which is what's highlighted, what we're looking at that's highlighted in purple, is that the driveway?
That's the easement in which the driveway lies, not real centered.
Okay, putting aside the question of easing for a moment, be where I would drive. And is that changing at all with this site plan?
Oh, I think the easement, I mean, the, I think that Mr. Strong has the right to, to change the look of that driveway, like he might want to regrade it, something like that, but the access would still be there.
There will still be, there will still be a driveway where there's a driveway now?
Right.
Okay. So this doesn't change, this, the, if you look at the situation today, and what this is proposing, what's going to change is the parking and presumably, at some point, a banquet center, replacing what was the old lumber site, but the driveway that exists now is going to continue to exist, whether it's paved or whatever, but it will, it continues to exist, and that's why the proposed banquet center is smaller, is in order to leave the driveway there.
Right, because the previous configuration had the building over top of that easement.
Right, right.
And it doesn't anymore.
Doesn't anymore, okay.
It's been moved south to protect that existing easement. Now, the driveway and the location where she parks is south and west. If you look in the site plan here, it's actually, Ms. Kingston parks there outside of the easement, outside of any recorded easement. So the impact, unless, unless she obtains permission to continue to, there won't be a building on top of it, and if she obtains permission, she can continue to park there where they reach some other agreement. We are protecting the easement up to her property line, because that's what we show as being recorded, and that's what we want to protect, is the ability to access a property. Now, whether she then parks, parks for many years, remains to be determined. That's really out of our control. You know, she could park on her property to the east, but that's not where she parks now. She parks south of her house on somebody else's property, and our, the deed that we've been given shows that as being property that Mr. Strong purchased from Mr. Helmut.
Okay, so, so in the past, that was, she may have been parking there, but that was property owned by the previous property owner, not? And the line, the line that's even with the driveway, that's the property line for the house, the 402 Lake house? Is that right? Actually, I realize that everyone else can't see it, but if I'm the only one who wants to be clear, if you could just show me on the map?
It's a thinner line, right?
This is, that's her property line?
Yeah.
Okay. And that lines up with what the easement is for the driveway?
Yeah, but it, you see that it, the driveway actually angles, so then she parks south of her property, outside of...
Your space. But that's an approved surface too, right now, or it has been. Actually, yes, sorry, I guess it's irrelevant. I guess the main thing I'm concerned about is the same thing we're going to talk about in the next case, is the property owner being able to get in and out of the drive. Nothing, nothing in this plan is going to obstruct that path from Ray Street to her property. Is that right?
Correctly. And there's a, you can see the curb path remains where it is now. And what Ms. Chenoweth was talking about, well, why not use, there's another drive north that's actually a little wider and might be easier to negotiate, but there's no parking at the end of that, and that would need agreement between the two parties to move.
I, I understand, thank you.
Any other questions?
On the memorandum, go to page three. It might have been corrected in the development agreement, but I couldn't find it. We go down to the paragraph that says financial impacts. In return, the developer has agreed to clear a certain portion of the site by March 1994.
He's fast, decade ahead of time.
And for the complete construction of the redevelopment project by the end of October 2005. So I'm just wondering, does that attack off?
Yeah, you caught one of these before, too. Thank you.
I mean, might as well do it now than later.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move approval, second.
Approval on a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to state to, to both parties who are, I guess, after this, this vote, going to continue to work on, you know, what the future looks like, that I would hope that Mr. Strong in the future could use property that he's acquired that because of the access issue isn't very useful, is very difficult to use, strip of land to the north of access, and understanding at the same time, the, the right and need of the resident to have access to her property there. So I just want to encourage both parties to continue to talk. If this vote goes through, I think, you know, we still have opportunities in the future for, to, you know, change kind of the final design, given that this is a phased product, and I just want to encourage...
Other discussion? Okay, if there's no other discussion, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes. Next, we have the corresponding budget ordinance for the redevelopment agreement that we just passed. It's an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for North Ray Street Development Agreement. It is in the amount of $50,000. Would reduce the, tip to fund balance by that amount. Move approval?
Second.
On a second, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yep.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Siderwate?
That motion carries with seven ayes. Next, we have an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow off-site accessory parking to be located at 715 West Michigan Avenue in R7, University Residential Zoning District, Plan K number 1873-SU-03. Ms. Bell, you going to present this?
I see that you've been provided, or background history? That's not working. You've been provided a lot of history about this case from both the petitioner and from the neighbors at 712. So if you have any specific questions, we can answer those later. I just want to provide you some history about where this special use case came from. In August, there was an initial request for the owner occupied bed and breakfast at 714 West Michigan. It didn't get approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board felt that the parking that was proposed to be stacked in the driveway would be detrimental to the neighbors, and it did not pass at the Zoning Board of Appeals. In December, December 17th, the Zoning Board did approve a request by the petitioners to allow three-bedroom breakfast at 714 West Michigan, since that they get inspections with the community development office, and again, that they have three bedrooms. But there were also two conditions that relate to this special use, that all parking activity associated with a bed and breakfast shall be located off-site, that a special use permit would need to be granted to allow off-site parking at 715 West Michigan Avenue or, or an equivalent site, and that they, the petitioner shall provide one space for each bed and breakfast guest, and that they, that they meet our zoning ordinance, and also that the conditional use permit should expire in the event that 714 West Michigan bed and breakfast guests were no longer able to use that off-site parking. And that 714 and the owners of 715 or an equivalent site would continue to have, to keep a contract going for no less than three vehicles. So the special use permit tonight is for three required parking spaces to be located across the street at 715 West Michigan. Staff has determined that the lot at 715 West Michigan can meet the parking requirements, not only for their module space requirements, but also the number that would need to be required for both Lincoln Green and the bed and breakfast. At the plan commission meeting, there was a lot of discussion of the commission members, that they felt that the drop-off activities that were likely to occur needed to be addressed. And although the Zoning Board of Appeals, that parking should not occur at 714, that they could define this drop-off activity and, and deal with that basically at the site. And so the plan commission recommended approval of the special use permit for the off-site parking at 715, but also put a condition, there were actually four conditions, building upon the ZBA's conditions. The third one being, a minimum of three spaces shall be designated and marked in the parking lot at 715 West Michigan for exclusive use of visitors at the bed and breakfast use at 715 West Michigan. And four, being that the petitioner self, shall submit a site plan to the zoning administrator and building safety division, that the pickup activity associated breakfast at 714 should be, that it shouldn't, so it should ensure that the shared egress to the residence of 712 should not be blocked or compromised, saying that this may involve some sort of construction. In response to that, I did hand out a dated site plan to you right before the meeting, which really just puts together two of the plans. It's the same information that was included in your packet. The petitioner has submitted a conceptual plan in response to the plan commission's request to accommodate for this temporary drop-off activity on-site, a nine-foot driveway in the property of 714 West Michigan. I know that the petitioner has discussed the effect of the treaties with the city arborist, and, you know, staff has also reviewed the plan, and conceptually, we feel that it would provide an adequate area for drop-off and pickup activities that may occur at 714. The options regarding this case are to approve the special use permit without any additional conditions, or to approve the special use permit with any conditions deemed appropriate or necessary, or to deny the special use permit. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Bell right now? Yes, Mr. Hayes?
What would be the problem with 714 using the driveway on their side and building the, the three parking spaces, you know, an extra parking space to load and unload the guests and still park the other cars on the other side of the street?
I'm not sure if I totally understand your question. What would be the problem?
Yeah, would there be a problem?
To have the, any unloading or dropping off activity at 714?
Yeah, in the back. You know, put the parking space where the load and offload in the back of the house.
Well, as this case has evolved, and I think that the, the neighbors and the petitioners did discuss that the width of the driveway and where the property line is said to be located, if there was drop-off in the back, any bed and breakfast guest may be up to a foot, their tire may be up to a foot, or part of their car may be up to a foot on the property of 712, first of all. Second of all, that wasn't really discussed at the zoning board or the plan commission. The reason to have this, this drop-off in the front would be that folks that may be guests would logically just pull into the driveway, drop off their luggage, their wife, their children, back up, go and park their car. They wouldn't know to go to the back and, and drop off.
Okay.
It'd be more logical.
So in order to put the drop-off in the back, what would have to be done?
They would, we go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, because the conditional use permit says that no parking can be in the back, and that drop-off, I guess it doesn't address drop-off for the zoning board.
That has more consequences.
That, a motion would be in order?
Thank you. I move approval of the ordinance with the following change, copies of which I circulated, to subsection four under section one of the ordinance, so that subsection four would read, "A paved area for drop-off and pickup shall be installed entirely on the property at 714 West Michigan in compliance with the attached site plan." That's the plan that was distributed dated 1/12/04, so as to ensure that the current shared ingress and egress to the residence at 712 West Michigan is not blocked or...
They have a motion and a second, so that would be this site plan here, which shows construction approximately, what, three feet to the west of the current driveway?
That's correct.
So that would be a paved area with a relocation of the retaining wall, or however they would want to do that.
Right.
Side.
If I can speak in favor of the motion, just briefly, the, my, my initial reaction to this when, when it first came before zoning board of appeals, and actually on the night of the plan commission meeting, was to oppose these permissions because of the, the major problem that could be posed for the property owners at 712 by bed and breakfast guests dropping off in the driveway. It's, I'm not against bed and breakfast, and I'm not against bed and breakfast in our neighborhood. In fact, if there were not a shared driveway here, I don't think there would have been any controversy over this at all, simple approval. The problem, though, is the driveway is shared, and in answer to, to Mr. Hayes's question, what would be the problem with putting him back, there, and I know Ms. Bell just answered, but I want to emphasize, there are two problems. One is that all of the customers for 714 West Michigan would have to use a portion of the property at 712 Michigan to get to the back. But the bigger problem, which is the one that concerns me most, is that people can say, when my neighbor Scott said, "This isn't a hotel," yes, a bed and breakfast is a hotel. That is exactly what it is. It's a place where different people who are strangers from out of town show up, generally for one night, you know, maybe two. And so even if the total number of people who ever come to visit is smaller than the total number of visits that, say, the Huberts make to this house, the difference is that the people arriving are new to the area, from out of town, do not necessarily know where they're going, and will be arriving for the first time in their lives. And after their very first arrival, they may well figure out where the right place is to go, but if any of you have ever stayed at a hotel, which I'm sure all of you have, if any of you have ever observed other people's behavior, look at your own behavior when you go anywhere, it's reasonable to expect that what I get, what most guests will do is pull into that driveway. That's the first thing they'll do, is they'll pull into that driveway and stop. And as we saw from all the different pictures, it's possible with people who know the property, it's possible to park a car in the 714 driveway and leave enough room for another car to get around it. It is likely because of this retaining wall on the 714 property, that a person pulling up into that driveway for the purpose of getting out and pulling out their luggage is going to park a few feet away from that retaining wall, thus blocking the driveway. In a lot of ways, a size nine foot into a size eight shoe, and that it just couldn't be done, but after listening to over three hours of testimony at the plan commission meeting, two commissioners, Lou Hopkins and Lori Gosia, came up with a proposal to make this whole thing work. You know, it'd be a lot easier to just say, and then part of me says, we should just, let's just, let's just deny it, this, it's too complicated, it doesn't work, but the people who own 714 Michigan really want a bed and breakfast, and the people at 712 Michigan really want to be able to get in and out of their driveway. There is one way to satisfy both of those needs, and that is this proposal. So despite any other reservations, there may be, I think this is without a doubt the best and probably only workable solution to the configuration of this land, so I encourage support of, of this ordinance.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
The language be clear about a pickup and drop-off be installed, rather than that there be a conversation leaning in that direction. After speaking to the petitioners, the neighbors who own, who share a driveway, neighbors in the area, a number of people in West Urbana, I feel like our city staff and our plan commission have really done a great gymnastics trick in trying to come up with something that would come close to satisfying everybody. I think those who don't want business uses, which includes, we should remember, the piano lessons, the, you know, some kind of home office business, if they don't want that in, in Urbana, I don't think that this satisfies that constituency, but I do believe it satisfies other constituencies, and, and this entire argument has reminded me very much of being a child sharing a bedroom with my sister. It was 10 foot by 14 feet. It had, it had a... It had, it had a door on one side. She put a piece of tape down the middle and said, "You can't go out the door because that's on my side." And I had to crawl out the window and down the six-foot fence and out the front door and ring the front doorbell to get my mother to let me in. So I understand the complexity of this situation and, and I hope that we have presented something that I think solves, resolves the concerns of the residents.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just, I'd like to speak, just briefly in support of Ms. Pat's motion. I think it makes sense in that if this, if, if extra traffic is going to be allowed as it would be in, with a bed and breakfast, it's important to not allow or not make it easier to trap one, to trap the people of 712 West Michigan or their car and deny them access to, to the garage or, or an ability to get out of, off of their property and whether it's to school or on a vacation or an emergency, to the doctor or to the hospital. I think it's an important thing to do, and I think this amendment addresses that. Certainly, I, I think that without that, it would, we would seriously be infringing on the property rights as the people of 712 West Michigan Avenue have stated, on their property rights and on their ability for enjoyment of, full enjoyment of their property. So I think this is a good compromise and appreciate the plan commission, the zoning board of appeals, the staff and, and Ms. Pat's work on this.
Thank you.
Question?
I've just got one comment, and assuming that Ms. Pat's comment is right, that this is the solution that satisfies the concerns of the petitioners to have a bed and breakfast and the neighbors to be able to get in and out of their driveway. You know, I've lived right across the street from the Hubert's Bed and Breakfast for a long time, last 15 years or so, and, you know, the amount of traffic, and I don't, Danny, how many rooms do you have there?
Technically, now that our kids are moved, three on the second floor and the third floor.
So three rooms, and I can count on the number, on one hand, the number of times when I've realized that people are there unloading and going in and out of that bed and breakfast. So it's really, the impact on the neighborhood, judging from the one that exists already, is negligible. And so, and I've seen my neighbors invest literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in their home, knowing that a bed and breakfast is right across the street. So I don't believe that this kind of, and I do hope that Ms. Pat is right in saying that this solution satisfies the needs of both the property owners at 712 and 714, because I think that bed and breakfast can be very charming and a very positive addition to neighborhoods if they're done right and providing, of course, that the neighbors get along with one another. So I certainly hope that if this passes, which it looks like it will, that it'll be the beginning for the bed and breakfast and hopefully that relations between the neighbors can be repaired over the next several months, because I know they've been afraid while this is going on. So I encourage your support and hopefully we'll have a new place to have visitors come to Urbana when they want to do that.
Any other discussion? Not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?